Here.
Mr. Houtman.
Here.
Mr. Candela.
Here.
Ms. Sullivan.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments on agenda items this evening?
I like the shaking of the head, no. Thank you. Um, okay, there being no public comments, we move on to presentations.
We are starting on our presentations this evening. First one with is with our Diamond Awards and for those of you, welcome family and friends that are here to support your Diamond Award recognition staff members. Each month we recognize. Each month we recognize staff members, but actually colleagues or administrators recognize staff members foregoing above and beyond and sparkling like a diamond. This year, we actually even leveled it up and took our core values of sparkle on, which is S is service, P is passion, A is advocacy, R is respect. Um, I'm looking up there to make sure K is kindness, L is love, E is equity, and then the O and on is opportunity and the N is nurturing. So we took the Diamond Award this year and we said, if you're going to nominate someone, please make sure that they exemplify the core values and give examples as to why. So we're really excited that we've leveled up how people receive and get celebrated and recognized for getting a Diamond Award. So we have four recipients this evening and I'm going to have the people who have nominated them and why they've nominated them to read them the reasons why. Tonight, Griffin um would could not be here today. He is one of our fourth grade teacher and he nominated his colleague Grace Schwander, who is also here, uh, also here, fourth grade, and I see her lovely parents in the front row. And I am so excited because honestly, Grace, you are the first first year teacher who ever received one and was nominated for one. So we wanted to make sure I recognize you for that. And I'm going to have Mr. Freiberger speak on behalf of Griffin and behalf of Griffin and his recognition is right up there if you'd like to.
So pretty official. Okay. So as mentioned, my name is Matthew Freiberger. I am, um, I'm joining Grace and our, if we're in our first year together at West Oak Intermediate School, I'm the principal. You really have dove in, you know, right away and just become one of our calming presences in the building. I can see why you were nominated. Um, I know that you've specifically taken time out to reach out to specific families and go on above and beyond your duties as a teacher. Um, it's just really cool to see somebody so audacious and ready to teach coming right out of school like this. We are really lucky to have you. I'm going to read some of what Griffin had to say. Um, I think Grace perfectly encapsulates the sparkle on mantra. Despite it being her first year at Woeis, specifically in areas of passion, advocacy, kindness and love. I have seen her interact with students in the most heartwarming and compassionate ways. And every time I see her walk into the classroom, there's always a multitude of students with a smile on their face. You could see from from outer space. Griffin loves space. So uh, this is something you should know. And it goes beyond, um, it goes beyond being great when students are around. And when we are in meetings with no students present, she talks about her students with such admiration and energy and it immediately lets you know that she is just who she is at all times, regardless of circumstance. I'm lucky to have her as a first year teacher counterpart and to be working with her as a new teacher whose actions make it seem like she's a 10 year veteran. I echo a lot of what's what's said. Thank you so much for emulating service and come on up and get your Diamond Award.
I don't have anything prepared, but in general, it's been a great first year at Diamond Lake in the district at West Oak Intermediate School. Um, I've loved being able to work with the colleagues and also working with Matt Freiberger with his first year. It's just been very welcoming and I'm excited for the rest of the year to come. Thank you.
Good evening, District 76. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. We are with great honor recognizing Ms. Erin Mitstarfer and Ms. Jenny Landite. And before we give them their Diamond Award, we wanted to give you a little bit of background of how this service opportunity came for both of them. So at the start of the school year, one of our sweetest second graders, Juliet Vieira, needed to have some corrective surgery. She was born with Pierre Robin syndrome and Juliet underwent surgery to expand and realign her jaw. As part of the procedure, an external halo device was placed with cranial screws to provide traction to her jaw. And due to this procedure, Juliet can eat very minimally by mouth and she receives most of her nutrition through her G tube. For her safety and to encourage ultimate healing, it was determined by her surgeons that it was in her best interest not to attend school at this time. When DLS learned of this, Jenny Landite and Erin Mitstarfer immediately spoke to our Director of Student Services, Robin Clip, and I about providing homebound tutoring. Remembering the joys of working with Juliet here at school, they wanted to be the educators to provide services at home to ensure she continued her successes in both speech, excuse me, speech language and in academic standards. Providing multiple days of service to Juliet after school in her home, both Jenny and Erin are preparing her for the anticipated return to DLS in November. They are creating individualized lessons and practice to provide her with significant support and ensure she is learning great level appropriate skills. It is Jenny and Erin who are providing individualized service to Juliet and reminding her that she is loved and missed by her DLS family. We also appreciate the fun charismatic attitude that our sweet girl Juliet is sharing with us when we see the videos from both Erin and Jenny. The Vieira family and I tonight would like to honor Jenny and Erin for their service to Juliet and thank them for leveling up, leaning in and sparkling on. And we are grateful for your commitment to servicing Juliet, who is here tonight to present both of you with your Diamond Awards. If the Vieira family and Juliet could please come up front to recognize both Erin and Jenny for their incredible service.
Hi, State. Wondering Mrs. Mitstarfer? I think she's there, baby. I miss Wendy, Mrs. Landite. Thank you. Can she do her video?
Yes. So we also just have a fun little thing to share for you, Dr. Sharmel Lewis, also with the great service that Jenny and Erin have been providing. On one of their very first days, they sent me the video of Juliet getting in touch with her communication device again, and it played one great thing just for you. Can you play it, please? Not working for us? All right, let's try it one more time. So of course they had to stand in me because we know I'm not a diehard Packers fan, but that was all for you, Dr. Sharmel Lewis. This is what high quality service brings. So thank you, Johnny and Aaron.
And thank you for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Berger. Mrs. Mitstarfer or Mrs. Landite, would you like to say a few words?
Well, thank you for that recognition, but I truly think that Juliet is the one who deserves the recognition. Her perseverance, positive attitude, hard work. I mean, that's what um, just gives me such a boost every single week when I go to her house. If I were to ever have a midweek slump on a Wednesday, what a great pick me up to spend time every Wednesday afternoon with Juliet. And um, it's a fantastic way to end my week every Friday afternoon. So it's been a really big blessing to be able to support Juliet at home, become a part of your family and just get to know her as a whole person, as a student, a family member. So thank you for that. Thank you for the recognition.
I too just wanted to say thank you to Juliet and her family for letting me come into her home. And it's just been a blessing to be able to see her uh, like three days a week. It has given me the opportunity to also take a lot of our new curriculum and work on it with a student one-on-one and really kind of hone in on the skills that she needs and see how it can be tailored to other students as well. I've been here in this district for 28 years, my entire teaching time and the family of the district of all of our members and the team members at school and our families that we service. It is just the best place to work. I'm honored and thank you so very much. Thank you so very much.
And our last Diamond Award this evening will be presented by Mr. Peterson. I'm sorry you always have to follow.
Yeah. I don't know. Who do I, who do I owe that credit to? Is that Hiram or yes? Yes. Thank you, Hiram. Well, either way here, thank you. Uh, thank you, everybody for your time and thank you for coming in today. It's great to see everybody. You know, with the middle school, we wanted to nominate somebody very uh, as well. So I'm really just, you know, ecstatic and just very excited just to nominate this person who just truly truly deserves it. Um, I like to present this Diamond Award to somebody that typically doesn't enjoy the limelight. Uh, she's someone that quietly does the best that she can each and every day, uh, is open to feedback and is always willing to learn. Mitzi Monroe made the decision to join us about a year ago, stepping out of her comfort zone and away from a career field that she had worked at for a very long time. Since the very beginning, her kind, hardworking and professional demeanor has allowed her to acclimate well within the building and among her colleagues. Uh, her strong skill sets have allowed her to to build strong relationships with students, parents and staff. And this allowed her to quickly acclimate herself to the school. Mitzi, although quiet, uh, and quiet and reserved here, when you, when you first meet her, has a personality that everyone is drawn towards and adds to the positive climate in the front office. The reason for me nominating her for our district Diamond Award is with the departure of her colleague in the main office. Uh, Mitzi went above and beyond in managing what was needed to be done by coming in early and leaving late. Uh, her ability to prioritize, uh, adjust and adapt with all things going on at the beginning of the year while keeping herself cool, calm and collected. Was was something that I have grown to admire of her. With all these qualities and many more, Mitzi, Mitzi has established herself as an integral part of our school. And I cannot be more thankful for for all that she's done and I am proud to nominate her as this month's Diamond Award. So wel- welcome to the Diamond Club here, Mitzi. Yes.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say thank you. Um, I will continue to support our families and staff and all of our students in any way I can. And I love working for this district, so yeah. Thank you.
That completes our Diamond Award presentation. We have another presentation side which is our district goals and priorities, but I know family, friends, I think some little friends that have to get up Thank you so much for coming and supporting.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. I know you're good tonight. If you want to give me that, I can let you take pictures. Thank you. All right, I'm going to try to top the Diamond Award presentations with our fabulous goals and priorities. Um, so this is our, actually our eighth year, starting to work on the same strategic priorities that we've worked on. And this year I hope you see the level up action that we've taken. The priorities that we've put in place are the same as far as academic excellence, professional excellence, operational excellence, financial excellence and excellence in communications. And we've divided up the presentation between myself and then Dr. Cunningham, who will go over goals one and two with academic and professional excellence. Mr. Hanson will go over the operational excellence and talk a little bit about edutclimber and how we're going to expand that into our professional learning communities. Mr. Rogers will give an overview of just uh, goal four with financial excellence. And then I'll conclude with excellence in communications and our new core values and mission and vision statements as well as our portrait of excellence. So we're going to give you a quick overview and just a quick review actually of our goals and priorities. Like I said, these are our five areas that we have continued and starting our eighth year on working on. So and I hope you'll see how they get stronger and more rigorous um, each year that we've worked on them and how they just expand to really lead to long-term district success. As with feedback from the board that we've taken over the past several years, we have put the same outcomes in place to have a cycle of continuous improvement and also be able to measure our results. So for goal one, we're going to continue to use the STAR assessments to measure our growth as well as this will be the second year of our SEL surveys for students. Goal two, our culture and climate survey, this will be our sixth year doing it, but we've tweaked it a little bit to match each one of our goals and our action plans that you'll see in the priority areas. And this year we'll also be taking the high reliability schools level two survey that Mr. Dr. Cunningham is going to be talking about. Goal three is our staff support and success survey, making sure our staff have the tools and resources and the support they need to do their, to do their work and to have professional excellence. Goal four will be reported by the annual financial report that we've provided to you each year as well as keeping or maintaining or strengthening our ISB financial profile designation. And then also new this year is updating our five-year facility plan that Mr. Robinson talked about. And then last, our goal five, this is also our fifth year doing the parent community engagement survey. We've updated some of the questions that we're looking for that match the goal five outcomes that we are, excuse me, hoping to measure. So goal one, or excuse me, I should say priority one is academic excellence. And I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Cunningham, who's going to come brief review of.
Thank you. So last year we changed a little bit of our measure of how we are going to talk about student growth. And we found it to be extremely successful and helping focus on every student's name, strength and need to go with that theme for this year. And so we'll continue this year to look at how can we improve student growth um, for all of our students kindergarten through eighth grade. And that involves looking at each of our subgroups and really each student as individuals and how, what they need, the supports they need to grow. So we will continue with that this year and that will be measured by positive growth from fall to spring on our STAR test. We give three times a year in reading and math. And we are also giving that in Spanish to a lot of our students. We'll incorporate Spanish as well, um, just as a report to the board, not in the goals and priorities, cannot all students take that test. And then strengthen our social emotional wellbeing, learning and engagement for all of our students. Um, that will be, uh, remember we created our social emotional learning survey last year after using the human X one of her number of years. We saw our students were scoring in the high eighties in terms of their, um, their, in the five, the areas of castle we identified that were connected to social emotional wellbeing and engagement. And so we're going to, with through our initiatives that we're doing to SEO, we'd like to see that go up into the nineties. Uh, we think that's a reasonable goal to set. And then we designed a multi-tiered systems of supports for MTSS programming manual last year. It's pretty robust. And we are putting that into place this year. I've been to a couple of data meetings that are already using that to place students into the interventions they need to make sure we're not pulling kids out of the classroom too much and we're targeting the supports by skill. And we're going to be looking at how we can use that DESA screener we've been using for social emotional supports. We will write that into the programming this year. So that manual will continue to grow and we look at uh, who, how we place students in each tier as a part of that. We will look at, um, I guess by by uh, twice a year. In terms of, should I just keep? All right, I'm going to keep rolling a priority to professional excellence. So um, this one focuses again on um, instruction to some degree connected to part one. We have started the process of high reliability schools, which I introduced last year. It's really a recognition based measure to see are the things that we do as a district, are they really successful? Do we do them with fidelity? Are we doing, are we spending our time wisely or instructional resources wisely? So level two status is focused on effective teaching in every classroom. And so to to help kind of guide our instructional practice, there's a few things we're doing. First is we use our instructional leadership walkthrough. In this case, we're going to focus on models of instruction, our ILT identified our priority. Those models are clear rules and procedures, incorporating student interests into our lesson planning, which ties very well to name, strength and need. And then the last one being um, helping our students with cognitively complex tasks. To give you an idea, that our science curriculum articulation we just held this week on the middle school shared how their finance, they really want to see students stretch in the idea of claim evidence and reasoning and how we can support that even at the earlier grades for students to begin to ask questions and to walk through that process even before they know the term of it. Um, our instructional coaching program, uh, we're focusing it even more so than we have in the past. Every staff member has, um, or every school has written a school improvement plan that's tied to these goals and priorities. And every staff member has written an instructional goal, again, that ties to the school improvement plan. So just everybody's connected to this. And the coaches know every single teacher's goal, are unable to support them individually. And then social emotional learning engagement for all staff. Um, to go over to the evidence side, there's a number of things listed and they come out of the high reliability schools. Really what they do is they give us a survey in these areas and then we provide measures of what we do in each of these areas. So do we communicate a clear instructional vision? That's the school improvement plan. It's abbreviated SIP. Each school has two to three goals. And then do we provide support to teachers to help them reflect and grow? That's the walkthrough. We'll see it in our culture and climate survey. But it's the goals they set with teachers and then our instructional practices known and monitored. Yes, we've written them into our school improvement plan. They're part of our walkthroughs and coaches provide professional development on best practice and instruction. Um, and the slide continues to name some of the same areas on the right side. Teachers are provided with clear ongoing evaluations based on that data that's going to be in our, we do tier one data review meetings. The board's going to see that when we present in November of how we use that to inform our instruction. So there is, there are just, it's really been a level up on how our teachers are using data this year. Um, they, they're using F and P data to help place students through using STAR data. We're using a number of different measures to really target skills. It's really nice when teachers go from here's the data to how am I going to use it? That's a huge step to take in any district to use it effectively and we're there. Uh, and then teachers are given professional development related to those growth goals. So we can do it individually by coaches and PLCs meet weekly and they're able to provide that support. And then teachers are going to be able to observe and collaborate on effective teaching. We've, every school has built in a plan to have teachers observe each other and best practices in the classroom to be able to do that. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Hanson who's back.
All right, so priority three is operational excellence. Here restructuring our PLCs, our professional learning community, uh, communities to focus on the MTSS process. There's two areas of uh, goals, goal areas to look at. One is utilizing and applying the data based decision-making within edutclimber. All that information that's academically and socially emotionally is be, it has and continues to be feeding into our data warehouse. And here is hosting this information during your PLCs to review this data on an ongoing basis to support the MTSS process. Uh, this is now going to be beneficial to help uh, improve our student academic, but also our SEL learning and growth and achievement in that area. And secondly, the goal would be also utilizing student products to inform and guide instructional practices. As we look at and dive into database decision-making by utilizing our data warehouse, we also have to focus on student products as well to be reviewed and discussed within these PLCs as well. How are we going to continue to measure it? We have specific questions aligned in our staff support and success survey specifically focusing on utilizing our edutclimber data warehouse. Not to get, uh, rather make sure that that questioning is not too specifically focused so that our, our is specifically focused, but not uh, answered where uh, we all use other systems as well. So we're going to be working on our question on that to make sure that we get a hundred percent growth in our certified staff. We're using edutclimber warehouse as well as utilize the PLC process to improve the instructional practices and utilize student products to inform uh, instructional decisions.
Okay, thank you. Pretty four, financial excellence, uh, maintaining fiscal responsible and efficient processes for long-term district success. So we have a couple tangible uh, goals on here and then one uh, financial metric we would like to meet. So the first one is to negotiate and ratify a new five-year collective bargaining agreement. So not only from a financial perspective, we want to seek out best practice, seek out um, what area contracts comps have been, but we also want to clean up our, our language in our contract, work with our stipends and really have a nice uniform collective bargaining agreement for the next few years. The next, develop a new five-year facility plan. We've done this uh, a little bit sooner than every five years and that's based off of really these pots of money we've been able to attain with S for one, two and three. So we've been able to uh, fast track some of our facility projects. Now we're pretty confident that money is going to be over with. So besides some additional uh, competitive federal grants we're going to be seeking out, we're really going to be looking at what we're going to do with the sale fair, even those proceeds. What projects we'd like to see from a both uh, an academic and curricular standpoint, but also a mechanical viewpoint there as well. So we're going to be uh, developing a new five-year plan, figuring out how to use those resources and uh, really maximize our um, that revenue from the uh, our different revenue streams. And then last is uh, increase our operating fund balance to a hundred and five percent. So really that is a, it's kind of a moving target. In the past, we've had some uh, some surplus numbers that we're looking at. This is kind of a combination of maintaining a surplus, but also reducing our expenditures. So the uh, the hundred and five percent that I'm looking to attain is uh, we need to have over a year's worth of fund balance reserves compared to our expenditures. So I'll kind of report back that on a quarterly basis to show you how we're, how we're uh, tracking on the target. So uh, some of these things that we use for measurables like our AFR, we won't have those until the October of the, of the next fiscal year, but at least with our But at least with our forecast five software, we're going to track that on a, a monthly basis.
The last priority is excellence communication. And I know this was. One of the things the board asked us to reflect on at the end of last year is seeing how we can get more volunteers and community and parents into our buildings. So in order to cultivate community awareness and promote the district seventy-six mission, vision and core values. We are going to develop and we're in the process of right now with Dr. Berger and Eric and Diamond Lake staff. To developing a parent and volunteer handbook. So we can definitely put that out there, encourage, support and embrace new family as well as community members to come in and volunteer into our schools. And make it meaningful volunteer opportunities. Also, we're going to continue district-wide communications. And make sure that we continue with the outreach and the service programs, not only that Sammy and the community liaison department is doing, but also throughout our. Schools with the kindness and service projects that we have going on on a monthly basis. And then again, this is just a priority that continues to remain, is continue to be responsive to any of our students, staff and family needs. Again, the liaison are also through our schools and the outreach programs that we're doing. So our measurable is having a completed parent volunteer handbook that people know where, they know it's accessible to them. And they can come in and take advantage of the opportunities that we have in our schools to volunteer and participate. Making sure that ninety percent of our respondents on that parent engagement survey. Will say that our staff and our leadership team know and live the mission, vision and core values this year. Making sure that they know what that is and we'll share a little bit at the next slide of what they are and trying to get that out there and making sure we do a good job of publicizing it and sharing our story. And then continuing last year, we had the baseline data of all the activities that we did district-wide and what was the attendance and participation rate. At each of those events. So this year we'll be able to build upon that and continue to keep on that and hope to see you grow and present the board with data of, of growth. Of how many people attend our events. So as I shared with you back in August, we worked on this over the summer. It's really identifying and defining what sparkle on means. And so as you can see, we kind of centered our, our diamond awards around there. We're going to also have a member, three members, one from each school will be recognized each month. For S September was service, next month, October is passion, November's advocacy and so on. So we'll be recognizing those staff members that go above and beyond and recognizing them publicly and sharing it out district-wide as well as with the board. Of how they kind of embrace and embody those core values. Our mission, three schools, one district, repairing our children to be lifelong learners, engaged in their community and ready to navigate their world. We tweak that a little bit to update it, make it more relevant to our standards. And then our vision remains the same of embrace and power Excel each child each day. We also modified with the influence and input of our professional advisory council, which is, as you know, with three members of each building. Came together and said that we want all of our district stakeholders to embody our vision, which is the embrace and power Excel. What does that mean? So we put in that they will embrace diversity, embrace inclusion, individuality, self-advocacy, safety and wellness. And they'll define those within the lessons that they teach and the standards that they teach. And so it's not only for the students, but also for all the adults that they interact with district-wide. Empower, making sure we empower courage, kindness, leadership, compassion and perseverance. And then with Excel, make sure that we excel in collaboration, critical thinking, problem solving, having a growth mindset. And of course, being a positive role model for our peers and for our students. So our next steps will follow what we've done that has proven success for us is the board. After our discussion and feedback, we hope to adopt this plan tonight. And then once we do that, we will, as a district leadership team, go back to our schools as well as together as a team and create action plans and timelines. We do that one hundred day check-in just to make sure that we're on target with what we need to, what we need to achieve for each of those goals and priorities. Then each of the principals goes back and meets with their building leadership teams. And making sure that they know exactly what the goals and priorities are and what action they're going to be taking to achieve those goals and priorities. How they align with their school improvement plans as Dr. Cunningham referred to. And then again, collectively and collaboratively, put those action steps into place with our district and building teams. We will provide you with a hundred day checkups in November, February, May, and just how we're doing as well as mid-year update. In February, we will have our professional advisory council share with you their, their perspective from each of the buildings and how they're doing with the goals and priority. And then our usual end of the year board retreat, giving you a summary of the progress of what we did and how we did in each of those measurable outcomes that we obtained our goals. Questions, comments or feedback from the board?
I just have a couple of actually of comments. As far as the Marzano status, level two, when, how long does that take to know when you've reached it? Like what's the timeline for that? And so that's just one question. And then my, another comment is I was really happy to see for operational excellence as far as the Edgiclimber system. That this year we're focused not just on a survey, but actually kind of seeing how things are being implemented. And kind of adding that to the evidence that is going to be collected. Because when I first looked at it, that was one of the first things that came into my head. So I was really happy to see that and I'm excited to see. What you find out and how it's utilized. So it was just that one question about Marzano.
Yeah, you know, it's, so this has been an interesting, so level one, we were never really, I would say concerned about as a term of use. Cause it's based on culture and climate and our district has done an absolutely exceptional job at that. And so reality is we figured out that, that our, the, our evaluators have. It's been a little hard to pin down some of the things they want. And so we've been able to, I think, I think we've gotten to a place in the last week or so, we've got the idea. So we're going to finish up one. So what'll happen is once we open to, now that we understand the process. We'll decide when we give the survey and that really kicks off the rest of it. And I think there's, if I remember, there's six individual sections. So it's a matter of, of the deadline we might give to the, the principals have to carry a lion's share of the work. So it's, it could be done in as little as a week, which is insane. Like we'll meet as a group to talk about what's, what's a realistic deadline with what are the products they're asking for? They're going to want to see PLCs, they're going to want to see our walkthrough data. They're going to see not only are we doing that, are we doing it really well? Are we doing fidelity in every classroom and can we prove it essentially? So that, that could be, if we, if I was to use this, I could say it's a six-week process. Once we kick it off, I wouldn't want to be held totally to that. But let's say we give this survey in February, we'd love to see that thing in April be pretty well in place. If you, when, if you were in a level three status, now you're considered a high reliability school. And so you, that's a big deal designation. It's a ton of work to get there, which the principals can tell you. And that's focused on, do we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum, which is tied to our standards-based report cards? It's really, it's, are we doing standards based well? And it's pushing us to find out if we really are and where are we weak? If that makes sense. And then I guess I'll, to comment to your comment. So for Edgiclimber Renaissance bought Edgiclimber. And so that's, that's very helpful right now because it's making STAR work a lot better. And as part of our student target portfolio process, we've been looking at how teachers can conference with kids. There's a really nice individual learner profile sheet that you can have up for every kid. So if I'm meeting with a student and I'm a teacher, I can see their attendance. I can see any like possible discipline. I can see the social emotional supports. I can see their EL scores and I can see their grades in every class and I can see their STAR scores right there in front of me. And you can actually add comments and we'd like to see teachers start to use that page if that makes sense. So we really believe, and after our data last year, we want to be more dynamic with it along with some of the other ways we measure it.
Hi, I just had a couple clarifying questions. I think I followed most of it, but there are a couple areas where I, where I, where I got a little lost. In the first priority, can, can we flip back to that? In the, in the measurable evidence. Can you explain the, the, the middle one again? I got, I got lost on that.
I'm so sorry. Basically, there's, there are thirty questions on the survey. And there are six areas in the castle wheel of social emotional wellness, essentially. So we have five questions. So to the board, last year we gave a summary data where we averaged the number of students that answered, agree or strongly agree. That they had kind of what we consider like a healthy social emotional experience in that area. So we averaged it and it was maybe about, it was almost every question was somewhere in the eighties. So like eighty-three percent of kids felt like they, school was a safe environment with the adults and the students they interacted with. And so we would like to see not just eighty, eighty-some percent of our students, but ninety-some percent of our students feel that support. And we're able to, through each principal had, through their, some of the community calls, kind of initiatives we're doing, whether it's students involved in after-school activities. Students that are connected to clubs and different things. There's ways that we are trying and we'd like to see reflected in the data that we have, even more students feel like they're connected. So we are upping kind of our baseline data from last year, from our summary to the board. I don't know if that answered it.
I, I think so.
You don't sound convinced.
Well, well, I, I'm, I'm just thinking if I, if I don't read the, the term one hundred percent. And I start, if I just say to myself, K pre-K through eighth grader students will demonstrate ninety percent or higher. So, so really what you're saying is we're, we're looking to increase our average, the average rating that we give. That we're, that, I'm sorry, that we're receiving.
That, that's a great way to say it. So if there's some semantics here, then we probably can clean it up.
No, no, no.
Well, that is. I think he wants it out. Just draw that. I thi- I think it's just pre-K.
Yeah, that, that works for me, but like I have my own quirks, so. And then on, can you just, it, it came up on, on priority three and I'm really embarrassed on this one. Student products, is that, is that work? Is that deliverables or what are student products?
Yeah, Hanson and I had a little bit of a, kind of, so basically it's two things. It's, it's one way I describe, but really this comes out of the high reliability schools piece. That we are going to be encouraging staff to be utilizing, when they meet in their PLCs, they should be bringing student work to the PLCs to define. So they're not totally connected, but they're both under the PLC umbrella, if that makes sense. So I know we kind of went through it, but really they're two separate entities. So teachers are, there's actually some teachers are very dedicated, certain boards to exemplar work, if, if you will, but they're trying to bring. Here's the assessment we gave. I'm finding this is a common mistake. What can we be doing to help our students improve and grow based on this? And so that's the idea of using student product to inform, what are we doing next here?
Now that, that, that clears it up for me. Thank you. And thank you for not just putting this together, but for, for, you know, adding, adding to it. And, you know, making it a little more robust and, you know, and sort of strive, you know, making it, putting the goals out there a little bit further. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo John. I, when I read the presentation the first time, I was really impressed. Like it looked like you had leveled up since last year. So I wanted to thank you for that. I have two quick questions. When we, as a board, kind of discussed the evaluations last year and looked at goal number one, specifically at. Student growth as measured by STAR, we had a lot of debate about that to, to basically try to understand, is that accurately capturing every type of growth? Our students would have. So you all are the experts. So if that's the metric you want to use, then that, I think that's fine with us. I think we just need to have an understanding of. When you say that they're going to have growth within the tiers of instruction, what does that mean? Is their score going to increase? Is their percentile going to increase? Are they gonna, you know, STAR doesn't have like a, this STAR doesn't, does it place you into your one, two and three? It would based on your like percentile, but not necessarily. So I guess that's what I'm asking. Like when you say growth within the tiers of instruction, like in layman's terms, what does that mean?
We want every student to, thank you for the question, by the way.
Sure.
We want every student to be able to grow in points. So we want to see movement. And so we would love to see them, whether they're moving out of the tiers, yes. But basically it's, I guess, another way of saying within, doesn't matter what tier you're in, we want to see you moving. So STAR does have their kind of percentiles. Every district has the authority to look at what is a good percentage for tier one, two and three.
Sure.
To provide support. So they do use them in the sense that they have like six tiers essentially of how they would break it down. But, so we will go that way with it, using numbers over percentile.
Okay, no, that makes sense. Cause I'm just trying to think of, if we're looking at every single student that could, you know, across the, the full spectrum. Depending on where you fall in those tiers, sometimes it's very obvious to see growth, but when you get to certain parts of the spectrum. Like if you have a student scoring in essentially the ninety-ninth percentile, how do you see growth there? But if you're looking at the score, then you would see the growth. So that's, I just want to make sure as a board, like it's something that we tend to debate for a long time. That we have a clear understanding from the get-go. So when we're looking at the data, we're all on the same page. And I think we're all understanding what you're talking about. So that's helpful.
No, and it's a great debate too, to ask, you know, are there other measures that show it? Cause STAR doesn't necessarily always, it, it always totally inform instruction as it does measure. Where are we sitting against everybody else that's taking the same test? It does inform it to a degree. But, you know, are we ready to say F and P reading is the right measure? I mean, not, it's, that's, it's a little bit comp, it's not totally, or standard space report cards, we're, we're playing, seeing a heavy emphasis on. Do we feel like our assessments are robust to get kids to a four, for example?
Sure.
And so there's a lot of revision there. So for us to say, the number of kids that in portfolios are, they're going to be tracking their own growth in each unit this year and how they do. Not knowing exactly how that is, it's not as easy to quantify, if that makes sense.
No, that makes perfect sense. I mean, I think the issue that we've discussed before, and I'm just going to speak for everybody, is that. I think we would all be doing a disservice if we said we didn't want a hundred percent of the kids to show academic growth. Like that is really our jobs, right? But at the same time, we recognize every kid comes to us at a different status, whether they have, they all come from different backgrounds. They all have different educational experience. They all have different things going on in their family lives. They all have different things going on that is going to impact how they grow. And while we all do our jobs, sometimes a win is getting a kid to go to class on time every day or so, you know, sometimes that's growth. And so we just want to, I guess, say that we want to be able to acknowledge that students are growing in different ways. Even if we're not necessarily always seeing the numbers increase on paper.
Thank you. That's, that's an awesome perspective. So, no, that's just so wonderful.
Especially high achieving students, but no matter where they are in terms of the tiers. A day in September compared to a day in December that they take the test. I mean, what's the difference between, you know, a, one point? If they went down a point, if they went up a point, like, are, are we going to put a knock against the whole? You know, the whole school because I have worse day in December than I had in September because maybe I didn't get as much sleep the night before or, or something like that. So, so we were just, you know, in terms of the way that we looked at the data this past year, it was like all the eggs were in that basket. And if one of those eggs fell out, then it kind of wrecked the whole basket. And we just wanted to make sure that we were getting multiple measures so that it wasn't relying just on that one day. And whether it's November, December, or whatever, whatever we're measuring the growth against. You know, how truly accurate of a picture it is. I mean, on average, it's going to give you a good idea. But to try to find a hundred percent of the kids in the right spot on the day that that test is, seems.
Take a snapshot of that minute.
Right.
And we can't measure their year's progress on that, but we have to have something.
Right, we have to measure it somehow. Just can we shore up what we're looking at with other, with other measures around it?
I mean, absolutely. I think it's a phenomenal perspective, so.
Well, I think it's good for staff to know that too, right? That not, it's all not banking on this one test, but this is the one that's consistent.
Yeah.
Through eight. So I think that. Through eight. So I think that's why we use it, right? Because it's what every student is using, but I know at each grade level, they're doing something unique and personalized for their students. And I think maybe it's just up to Peter and the principals and for us to finalize what that is.
Yeah, I think that would kind of address, and I'm glad you brought that up, Dave. I think that would address kind of our concerns.
Yeah, that's, no, I think it's wonderful and hopefully that portfolios and standards based grading will be a great catalyst for that.
Um, I had one more question. Bob, and it's for you. Um, so looking at goal five, and I know you basically, you answered part of this. In looking at the data and um, basically developing a matrix to measure participation, which will build upon the baseline that is established. Do we have a specific goal for what we're looking at in participation? And when we're talking about participation, are we focusing primarily on school or organized events, meaning um concerts, bands, uh choir, conferences, parent teacher conferences, um, that kind of data? Or are we also looking at things that would have been organized by like the BPAC and the PTO?
We're looking at everything. So I think, you know, when we created the survey last year, it was whatever event you're having in your school, so like the family nights, the band concerts, you know, the meetings, the parent universities, whatever they are, send it to Eric, put it in and what the attendance is. So we're hoping to not only increase the participation at each of those events, we're probably doing the exact same things, but we're also adding on events. So that's the other piece too, is increasing the events, but we're also, we want to increase the participation. So to your question, I don't know if I can really answer it. I just wanted to get, we all want it to increase.
Okay.
So if last year it was, let's just say fifty percent, we'd love to get it up to sixty percent. And then maybe next year we can say, all right, our goal is seventy-five percent of our families will attend a hundred percent of our events or eighty percent of our events, whatever that looks like. And I think that's after this year where we can specifically answer that better.
Yeah, no, that makes perfect sense. I just didn't know if you had a goal in mind or if it was essentially just an increase. And then can you share out the baseline data with us?
Yeah, I think it was on the, if not, I'll find it. We'll definitely share it with you.
Thank you. And then my only other question is, um, once kind of this is approved and signed off on, can we get a, a version in Spanish?
Yes, and actually you don't see it in your um presentation mode, but it's all, all of our presentations are always done in Spanish and they're posted.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was posted already.
Absolutely. Right. So and it's any exact same format, it just goes English, Spanish, English, Spanish, and then we, we post them that way. So it's just you, it's not visible to you right now.
Great. Thank you. And my only other comment is, um, I think adding the collective bargaining agreement to the financial excellence, it was a great addition. No pressure, Eric.
Yeah, because we are going to have that completed. We're not going to network without a contract.
Fantastic.
And just so you all know, I was going to add it in my other, but since we're on that topic, we're going to be meeting with um our union representatives at October twenty-fourth. So we'll start that process going of having negotiation discussions. Right now, we're going to do it with just myself, um, Mr. Rogers and Dr. Cunningham and then their team. And we're going to meet a couple of times, see what the topics are. We've gotten some very positive feedback that there's not a lot to discuss as far as contract language. And so we might even be looking at just taking this contract and extending it with updated salary amounts. Let's hope so.
Okay, fantastic. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I think this might be for Mr. Rogers, but project, and this might not even be the place to talk about it, but projected enrollment I know has been down, is down this year, like kind of considerably in kindergarten. I know that you have to factor in all of that future possible enrollment numbers for staffing, for the education fund. But does enrollment look like it's continually decreasing or is it?
Yeah, that, that's definitely one of the items we're going to be bringing to you at some point later this year is to uh consider a new enrollment study. So I've approached District Seventy-Five and One Twenty about their interest in redoing it. So it was three or four years ago, we did our last enrollment study, that was before this new development. So I think it might be wise to consider that again, just so we can kind of have some more accurate data. So uh last year I reviewed with the principals. Um, they provided low, medium and high enrollment projection and they were kind of all over the place. Some were kind of following the medium enrollment projection, some were the low a, as in Diamond Lake. Um, and some were kind of on track. Um, so again, it's kind of a crystal ball right now. I think it's prudent for us to at least consider uh how that might affect us in our future finances. Exactly. As we go down sections, go up in sections. So you know, right now, when I'm doing, doing my future projections, I'm still maintaining uh current, yeah, current staffing levels. So it's a bonus if we, you know, save a little money, but also we got to prepare, got to add any, you know, down the road.
So thank you very much. We appreciate all the work that went into this. Um, like I said, I think that we all feel like um it really, the goals and the kind of the level of fidelity to the goals increases every year. So that's great to see.
Thank you. And thank you to the district leadership team who helped put it all together and our pack, who are not here tonight, but also had uh feedback and input. So we're looking forward to working on it. So thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, that wraps up our presentation and we're going to move on to our business agenda. The first item on the business agenda is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and or non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If any one board member, staff, administrator or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A through D as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please? Ms. Bayless, yes? Mr. Candela? Ms. Angarola? Mr. Becker? Ms. Hale? Yes. Mr. Help?
Yes.
That motion carries. The next item up for action is the press. Um, issue one twelve. Did anyone have any questions or want any discussion before we um approve? Okay. Then whereas policy creation and updates and changes to adopted policies are provided for District Seventy-Six through subscription to Policy Reference Educational Subscription Services Press from the Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB, and whereas the policy committee reviewed the policies and a first reading of the policies was held at the Committee of the Hold Meeting on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Therefore, be it resolved that the Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six Board of Education moves to approve the policy changes as presented and reviewed in IASB Press Issue One Twelve. May I have a motion to approve, please? Second. Mr. Becker? Ms. Hale? Yes. Ms. Angarola? Ms. Bayless? Yes? Mr. Alvin? Yes? Okay, that motion also carries. And that concludes our business agenda for the evening. Um, moving on to board discussion, we have two items. I'm gonna start with the second item first. I think if everyone saw their email today, you'd see that we got a letter from Mrs. Hotman reminding us that last year the district sent home secure firearm storage information to parents and she's requesting that we do so annually beginning this year. Um, the reasoning is in the letter, I think we were all in agreement with that last year. And so unless anyone feels differently, I think I speak for the board when we ask the district to please send that home again.
And that was just coincidental.
Yeah. Yes.
The timing.
Okay. Um, and so then the next item is that the um twenty twenty-three IASB resolutions came out. And for anyone that's new or just to refresh everyone's memory, in the fall, IASB um sends out these resolutions that were submitted to their resolutions committee by various school districts across state. Essentially then at their annual meeting, each school district sends a delegate to vote on these resolutions. Um, the committee has already either recommended to adopt or not to adopt. So you are only voting really on the um adopt resolutions that they're recommending. You don't vote on the do not adopt unless there's like a complicated procedure that can be followed where they can appeal it and anyway, I'm not going to get into it. Um, I because I don't know the procedure well enough to accurately tell you, but um they, IASB has plenty of additional information on that. Um, so typically as a board, we will spend one or two meetings discussing resolutions. Um, and then voting as to how our board would like to vote at the triple I conference and then um, one of us will attend the delegate assembly and vote as the board has decided. Um, there are not very many resolutions this year. Um, there's only five that yeah, there's only five and that are presented and then there's like um, a couple that are do not present. Um, four that are do not present. Um, so significantly less than in the past. Um, go ahead.
As I was reading through this, I'm thinking, wow, this is going to be the first time I'm reading through this and I'm not going to get aggravated. And
Then you got to see.
And then I got to the very end and then I got aggravated with the last do not present, but we can go through things in order, but
Agreed.
Um, that was, I think, something that stuck out.
I would agree with you. So my suggestion is that everyone take and some time to read through these, digest them. There is a bunch of information at the beginning of the PDF that's in the packet, but also I think all of you would have gotten a link to this in your board email as well. Um, that talks about the um kind of the procedure and the process and gives you some background to that. Um, and my recommendation is that we start to discuss these at our first October board meeting. And then we can really continue that discussion up until right before the triple I conference. So we have ample time to discuss the five.
Um, can I just bring up the one that they, the, the, the final one that they um say do not present?
Yeah.
Um, the, the one that says uh suicide prevention education submitted by Warren uh township high school district one twenty-one. And essentially it's saying that advocate for adoption of state legislation to strongly encourage and fund district suicide prevention education measures, including but not limited to legislation encouraging funding for school. For school district provision of edu- educational materials around safe gun storage and suicide prevention and legislation. Basically, this is a similar, similar point. The connection between suicide and safe gun storage and, and almost ironically, this, this past weekend, I was uh the Lake County Suicide Prevention, I'm going to get this wrong, it's a task force or there's a group and they had a, a five K. You know? And they had uh all sorts of organizations had tables. And you know, and the con, you know, our congressman was there. Lake County State's attorney was there. And the more they talked, they talked about the connection between um the availability of a, a easy availability of firearms and and suicide, since it's uh, it's about a ninety percent uh uh mortality rate when somebody uses a gun. And uh, and much lower when somebody uses some other means such as uh taking pills or, or something like that. So meaning it, and all it requires is some kid to have a bad day and just for a brief moment, you know, sort of be, be outside of their, you know, not be thinking clearly and, and then it's, then it's very tragic. And I thought, and then I read this, that, that the IASB that the committee doesn't even want to bring this in front of the group to vote on as something we would recommend, something we would uh recommend that the IASB lobby for. And uh, and, and the reason is they uh, the committee, the committee agreed that education on suicide prevention is important, but they do not feel that advocating for gun storage should be included in the language of the resolution. So uh once again, I'm, I'm disappointed. I almost see this as a failure of leadership on the behalf of the IASB to to, to dismiss it the way that they've dismissed it. And it's, it's really unfortunate because this shouldn't be a political decision, talking about gun storage. I mean, I know there are folks who say, don't tell me what to do with my guts, but um, but for the most part, you know, responsible firearms owners are are very uh in favor of, of sa- of safe storage of their, of their firearms. And uh, and I don't think it uh, and I think it makes sense to couple it with, with the uh with, with the uh resolution on uh suicide prevention. So I know, I feel better now.
Well, thank you.
Said my piece, but.
I, I mean, I think that this to me is similar to years past when the IASB Resolution Committee doesn't seem to be looking at actual hard data and statistics that would explain the correlation between these two things and would also explain that, you know, just like you said, um quick access to a gun normally is able to result in, you know, a fatality rather than you know, giving people a second option. And so, um, yeah, I mean, I think we all feel disappointed. I'm not surprised. No. Um, but I think we're disappointed. They, and I think, and not just with, with this issue, I think in years past, we've seen that they don't seem to be looking at data and evidence for other things either.
And this one hits closer to home when um
I mean, earlier this year, a child in Vernon Hills, you know, a two-year-old named herself.
Yeah.
Because there was a, a, came across a firearm lying on a bed. Um, this is one of those things that well, uh, I think makes sense for, for the schools to uh um, to, to, well, it would make sense to me for the IASB to, to a lot before.
Agreed. Okay. So um, thank you, John, for that. And um, then just as a heads up to everybody, please take a look at these and we will discuss at our October meeting. I don't know that it'll really take us more than one meeting to discuss, but depending on what else is on the agenda, we could split it up. So um, that's that. I think that's it for board discussion. And we had one freedom of information request that was fulfilled, notices and communications. Um, oh, well, okay. Well, so this is good. Now that I'm opening the, the documents. So I think as everyone knows, I sent out a note um like a week or two ago, but, and I had submitted um an application for the school board governance recognition. And we were chosen as one of the forty-five districts to earn that designation. So that's great news. Um, once we earn that designation, we can reapply every two years for that. Um, thank you to everyone who sent me a bunch of information at the last minute when I asked you for random data. Um, it was a very long application, so I'm glad to see that um kind of our hard work over the last couple of years paid off. And that we're going to be recognized, will be recognized at the October Lake Division meeting and then I think also again at triple I. So great news. Congratulations. Thank you all for your hard work. Thank you all for your hard work. Glad to hear that.
Thank you, Joy, for putting it all together.
Oh, you're welcome.
And submitting it on the board's behalf.
You're welcome. Um, I think we also have a couple of things from seat all there and a staff thank you card. Is there anything else you want me to point out? And then, um, moving on to the District Seventy-Six highlights, there's a great article about Bhavna.
Not about Bhavna.
It is about you. It is about you and Lisa.
Yeah, but it's about women in leadership.
Again, it's about you because you're in it named you, so it's about you. Great article. Um, the big ideas newsletter was great. And then the diamond dish was like the cutest video I think I've seen in a long time. So thank you.
Keep them coming. Keep them coming, Dr. Burger.
Oh, my God, those little maracas. That was like so cute, so cute. So thank you, thank you all for sharing things like that with us because I think that we don't always get a glimpse into every school and get to see what everybody's doing. So it's always great to see.
Yeah.
They're a lot, a lot more interesting than the budget. Okay. They're a lot more interesting than the budget. Okay. All right, then the check registers. Maybe you could have the kindergartners present the budget.
And sparkles.
And have Mr. Hanson animate it with confetti. Okay.
I think sparkle.
Level up, Eric, level up. Okay, uh, moving on to public comments and petition on non-agenda items. Um, as we have lost all of our audience, I am guessing there are new public comments or petitions on non-agenda items. Did anyone have anything for others this evening?
I just wanted to share, and I know I shared it with a couple of you that arrived a little earlier, but in front of you in the MHS envelope. Um, are your VIP passes to the District One Twenty events, sporting events, as well as fine arts and musicals. So, um, I will thank Dr. Myers for thinking of all of us, but I just wanted you to know. That they were there for you. Leisure and enjoyment.
Yeah, please thank him. That's a very kind thing to do.
I absolutely will.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
Great, then we will, um, move to adjourn. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please? Okay, that isn't too bad. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.